Go to you. Go meeting order. First item up is the adoption of the agenda. Eric. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed? Let's carry. And then moving on to the council table for information. Shawna?
I'm here for information, I have a couple of questions.
Can you? Go ahead.
Okay, um, the first one is to the city of Metz and Pat. E F T zero 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 three two zero four. Fire dispatch fees and radios. Sorry?
Are there any questions?
No, no, that was my question.
So.
My question is, how much of this is an annual fee and is it an annual fee? How much of that was radios? Eric?
Um. I, I don't know the exact split. We were budgeted. We're budgeted twenty five thousand, if I recall correctly, for all the AFRAC radios. So this is to do with. This is to do with that. And I don't know what portion of dispatch fees are like if. If I remember correctly, it's broken up into. Public Works and. Fire, so I think it's around a thousand or twelve hundred dollars. I can get the exact breakdown if you need me. Um, but most of it is purchase of radios, not the.
Okay.
Not the dispatch.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. And the other one was, um. In the landfill council table. So it says, Petropors Industries cleaned doors for service. So saying that, i- is this an actual clean bill of thirteen hundred dollars?
Yeah.
So, uh, can you explain?
Uh, for the dozer to go to the cleaning shop prior to getting repairs and asking. Before it's just like a piece of arming and equipment or construction equipment to go from site to site. Yeah, to make sure it's reappeared because you can't transport sports.
Okay, so it was transported, so it needs to be repaired. Okay, that I understand. Okay. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions? Who'd be able to vote for baby's mom? The water license transfer agreement, was that ours or Tim's?
That's our, that's for the purchase. It's our deposit.
Okay, because when it goes through a lawyer, I'm going, is that a fee or is okay, but if it's a.
It's our deposit.
It's our deposit, because I thought you were responsible for all these other.
It's our deposit.
Okay. Right, any other questions? All in favor then, receiving for information? Opposed? Let us carry. And then the cash and investments summary.
Secret information?
Kathy? Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Let us carry. Then we move on to delegations. So the first delegation we have up is Anthony and Ruth Braskow. Yeah, I guess. You can come right up in there or you can stay back there if you have a good voice.
Um, I have a few papers that end up, is you want to throw out, if that's okay?
Alright.
Oh, Eric is passing along.
Welcome, go ahead.
Hi, um, so first of all, I know, I'd like to introduce my husband Anthony and myself. Um, her surname is Piper. Um, but I also made a name which is Braskow and it's so much easier to give all your racial things. Um, such as purchasing a house, all the various accounts, especially over time. Anyway, so we're new to your community. And, um, thank you for having us, mayor and council members. Um, I guess what brings us here mostly is curiosity. Um, curiosity about three one eight Red Cliff way, so west, which is, uh, is a right away. Which, um, you as a town, we as a town, I guess, own. And just what its purpose has been in the past. What its purpose is in the present and what its purpose will be in the future. Um, so. Um, we'll try and keep it short and sweet here. Uh, mostly it's, uh, um, the first page that you have in front of you is basically just an overview summary. Um, I'm just gonna be real quick about it. And then, uh, pages that are following, you can refer to them at your time, but basically how it works is. Um, you already have a nice photo up there, so I probably didn't need to print out this one showing the two respective properties that are in question. Three one four and three one eight. Page two is some data that we took from our cell camera. Um, which came with our house, so that was kinda heavy. We just kind of re-purposed it. Um, and basically it shows that the majority of the users are deer, um, Jim and Ryder. In our photos. So, thank you, and a couple other people. There's not a whole, uh, we also do understand that the last week, the data had, the weather hasn't exactly been really in summer weather. Four seasons in one day kinda scenario. Um, and, uh, but anyway, the majority that we've got here are deer. Um, although there's a couple of birds and porcupine, I think, which was kinda interesting to see on our camera, so that was fun. Um, this third and fourth pages, just in general, if you had a look at them, we're kind of open. We're hoping that we can do something with the town of Red Cliff. Um, the page three highlights if we, what we'd be proposing is to split the. Split the lot into two, um, and put a pathway. Uh, we understand that in two thousand sixteen, I have a letter here from the, um, James Johansson. He was a special engineer for the town of Red Cliff. And there was a actual path that was proposed where actually it was to be between our two properties, uh, three one four and three twenty. I don't know what happened with that. Um, and I think we spoke with, wasn't it Kathy?
Who's good.
Hello, you.
Hello, Shannon.
Thank you.
Shannon.
Oh, Max, I'm sorry, Shannon, you're right. Sorry, I was trying to speak with you. That name, excuse me. Anyway, um, we spoke with Shannon and, um, basically she. You couldn't find any information. We didn't exactly give you a large lead time. Um, so that's kind of a summary of what the pages highlight. The fourth page is basically, um, we buy the entire lot and there's no path kind of scenario. Um, I guess then the, the last option, which we didn't print out, is to do absolutely nothing. Um, which is also an option. Okay, so, real quick, um, point number two. We are talking about the, the service right of way that is a municipal right of way right now. What has it been? Well, it's been for a shed seven five ga- gas pipeline. That runs the city of Metz and Pat to an event, to a shut-in well, so it's no longer in use traditionally, it has been used. Um, we've already talked about deer. Um, there's mostly, when we look out our windows, we mostly see people that are walking and entering on the path that's between two one eight to three oh two. Red Cliff way and on the paths, there's joggers and bikers and hikers and dogs and kids and what have you. Um, okay. I've already talked about the path proposal. I don't exactly know, other than the letter that I have that came with the house, which is nice and handy. Um, proposals. Um, I guess selling part of the land does, you guys probably already know this. It's not like it's rocket science here. It's a small piece of land, it's only thirty feet wide. We propose to, um, give you, take, um, I think it's twenty? Yeah, twenty feet and leave ten feet for a right of way if there were a path option. Um, obviously that would be lovely, it would look very pretty. Anthony did a nice little rendering of a path going through on one of the pages. Yeah, on page three. And that one would allow other deer and porcupine and birds and what have you to still have access as well as people would. Makes kind of sense because three one seven, right across the street, is already a right of way anyway. So, um, you know, we just kind of were open to any option, really. Uh, we thought that if we purchased a part of it, that money might be, um, useful to, um, developing that path, April, so to speak. Um, we don't really know what, we kind of spoke with realtors in the area to find out what they were, but we're open to what you were suggesting as well. Um. We, from our perspective, would like it, because our fence line is about two feet from our window and we have a cracked window from a stone that's been drawn. And so, obviously, the curiosity there is, we kinda just like a bigger yard. And it doesn't seem like that probably is in use for anything anymore. Um, the cons, of course, is you have to do the, you know, all the costs associated with transfer and parcel subdivision. I would imagine amalgamation, the cost of building a path and moving the fences and such. Um. And selling us all of the lot, I guess, would be more money, no more maintenance. Um, the cons would basically remain the same, right? And also there's fewer access points for both animals and humans. Um, although I, I will point out again that there's a perfectly good access point for houses now, so it's kind of. It's a judgment, like, if you don't mind, we're open to either option. Any option, really, if anyone has any good ideas, we'd love to hear them. Um, and then lastly, the only thing that I wanna talk about, other than questions, is, um, we kinda like to know, we don't wanna be. We wanna be a bit of a bug in your ear, but we also don't wanna just go home and sit and wait for an answer. We kinda would like to know who we can bug or who we can talk to and what kind of. What would be an appropriate timeline between you guys for, uh, decision or if you even know that, but just as a question. And, um, in conclusion, I guess, we just wanna say thank you so much and we're enjoying your community. And we love the Cooley's and we're happy to see all the users and it's great in the COVID times, especially for people to get out and access. Our wild, our, see the wildlife and the songbirds singing in the morning and hiking, it's like, we're completely straight. And we appreciate that you looked out, allowed us to present. Any more questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
Chris, I'm sure the designer of this isn't sitting in the survey now anymore, but, uh, what was the purpose of having two access windows?
No, he did that.
I, I know, yeah, I was about to correct myself, but. There was a proposed access point there as well?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty sixteen? So what's the purpose of having two so close together from our designing step? Is there any advantage to that? Redundancy?
Uh, administration did not have enough time to go back and look into perfect files to see what information was in there. That would have to be, be that perfect. I guess, I didn't make a copy of it, but I have the original letter from two thousand sixteen where it says there was. I'm more than happy. With your copy of. Absolutely, yeah.
I, I think, Chris, one of the considerations could be, there is an alley right across the basin, that's why anybody walking that alley. Would then not have to go off the four houses to keep on going. They could directly access. That's probably why Jim sneaks through there. Hard to say, I don't know why he's sneaking through there.
Go ahead, Sean.
So. This states that it's a decommissioned pipeline, so is there any other utilities that run underneath here?
Not as far as the map that I have. Um, I also have a map showing landlocked beats for that lot. Um, and there's nothing other than that seventy five skid steel gas, natural gas pipeline. That runs along there, as far as I know. Now, this is obviously just a, a preliminary. Um, you know, kind of, we haven't done any detailed investigation where we have to actually. Find out data from the city of Metz and Pat or what have you, but, but. It's official, it's from the city of Metz and Pat and it's, um, a gas utility facility map. And we bought it for, um, another project that was on the house.
Right, we would have to check with the city to see if they would be willing to have that line moved.
Well, and if it's totally decommissioned. So, I guess, um, the other thing that's kind of important, is it a town lot or is it a city lot? Because the city that owns some lots.
It says it's a town lot in this letter.
Okay, so it's a city utility right of way, but it's still town lot.
Yeah, that's what it says.
Being a city utility right of way can be.
Well, if they.
They have been decommissioned?
And no longer require the utility right of way, then, then these options can be available.
So first step is to see.
I think there's some other first steps to that.
Oh.
No, I mean, it, it doesn't hurt to come and ask and, I mean, we can get administration looking into what's really there. And what the purposes are and can it be relinquished? That's all good, but, I mean, your question was how long?
Yeah. No idea.
I'm not going to. Sometimes things don't go as quickly as people would like, uh, because there are other priorities that take people's time. Um, this would involve some time access. I, I don't even know, you know, because they haven't spoke yet, I don't even know what their thoughts are, because sometimes they come up with thoughts too. And we have a good time. Go ahead, Sean.
Can administration come back with several things? Whether it is link decommission and, and that is totally relinquished to us? And two, if we are to consider selling it in, uh, fair market value, is that right?
If that is the wish of council, we're starting to do that one.
Well, I think there would have to be groundwork because we can't say anything tonight. We know less than you do right now.
Sure, it's politician joke or something.
That's what they all say, isn't it?
That's right, yeah.
Do I need to be this much?
Um, it, I think first thing to do would be to receive. Their presentation for information and then if we'd like to recommend, administration gathers some material. To bring back.
And not for information.
Okay, Jim's gonna move for information. Any more questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay, I do, Ruth.
Thank you.
Like, if you want to make the motion, but.
Yeah, I would.
Gather.
I'd like to make the motion.
Backfounding? Okay, so Shawna's gonna make the motion, but it's in, listen to us. So did this just come in real quick, like Wednesday deadline kind of thing? Okay. Alright, does anybody have any questions on the motion for it being gathered for? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? It is carried.
No timeline.
Oh, that's okay.
It shouldn't be before.
I can just follow up with this.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Alright, it's kind of been nice.
Absolutely.
A good camera.
Ah, ah, ah. What was that? It's a good camera, but you can tell us what the dog's name is. Yeah.
They can read, they can read the tag. So yes, Eric, you are next. We have Derek Taylor from K B M G O P and he's here to talk about financial statements, audit report for the town of Red Cliff. Later on, give us information, welcome. So, welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to, uh, take you through your, uh, your audits, um, and, uh, the financial statements. Um, I apologize, a couple of you have to listen to me talk earlier, um, so. Get to listen to me twice in one day, that's like lightning beams, being hit by lightning twice, um, but maybe not quite as exciting. Um, before I get into the financial statements, whenever an auditor, uh, meets with those charged with evidence or required to go through certain items, I'm gonna take you through those first. Um, and then I'll take us into the financial statements. Um, the first item is just to reaffirm our independence. Um, so, uh, K B M G takes steps to ensure myself, K B M G and anybody who works on the audit is independent of the town. Um, so it may take steps again to make sure that nobody's relating to anybody in a decision-making capacity. Or that there's no financial interests with anybody in a decision-making capacity or work within town. Um, with regards to the audits, um, we've completed the audit work and we're prepared to issue what's called an unmodified or a clean audit opinion subject to our discussion here tonight. Um, a couple of items that we need to go through, the first one would be the framework in which the financial statements are prepared in accordance with. So consistent with the prior year, your financial statements are prepared in accordance with Canadian public sector accounting standards. Um, so that's again, same, same framework that your statements have been prepared in the past. As well as the same framework that, um, all your peers would be prepared in accordance with as well. And there's been no changes in that framework, uh, in the current year. Um, when we get into your financial statements, I believe it's the second note, there's a number of paragraphs that talk about some of the changes that are coming, uh, to the framework in the future. Um, so if you're bored because yourself, if you're quarantined, yourself isolated, um, definitely something to look at, um, going forward. As some of those, those, uh, changes in the framework could have an impact on the, uh, on the town's financial statements. An other item that we're required to go through would just be to, uh, to discuss the policies that management uses. Um, so again, the, when we get into the financial statements, the very first note talks about some of the significant accounting policies that management uses in preparing your financial information. As auditors were required to look at them, um, compare them to the public sector accounting standards. Um, ensure that they're appropriate, that they're applied consistently, that they're applied with no significant bias and how they're selected. So if there was any concerns, I'd break those to your attention. Now, we don't have any concerns with regards to those, so, um, no, no real comments on those. Um, next item that we're required to talk about would be the estimates used in preparing your financial statements. So when you look at the town's financial statements, there's really two significant estimates that are used. Um, the first one is with regards to the amortization of your natural capital assets. And the second one is with regards to deferred revenue. So the first one with regards to the amortization of your capital assets, whenever you acquire, um, hard manageable assets or you invest in the infrastructure. Those items are not expense right of way, instead they're set upon your statement of financial position. Management estimates how long those assets will be used. And then over that estimated useful life, those expenditures have been expensed into your statement of operations. So what we're required to do as auditors are to look at those estimates, compare them to your historical experience, as well as compare them to your peer groups. And see if we have any concerns with, uh, how they've been implemented around those estimates. Um, no concerns from that perspective. Um, the second one, um, that I mentioned was deferred revenue. So what this represents is that when the town receives funding from external sources, the stipulations on it. Um, the town can't necessarily recognize that, that money into revenue until it met those stipulations. So one of the items that we'll, we'll see on your financial statements will be deferred revenue. And largely that is, is made up of prepaid property taxes, because that's from the next period. Or grants that we've received that have those external stipulations that we haven't quite met yet. So, um, again, what we're required to look at is if management receives funds with external source stipulations on it, are they meeting those stipulations? Is it appropriate that they're recognized in revenue or not? So, again, no concerns from that perspective, but again, things that we need to look at, things that we need to discuss with you, when you find folks. Um, the next item that we're required to go over would be if we identified any audit differences. So while we're conducting our audit, if we find any, any, any thing that differs from what's in the accounting records, um, we bring those to your attention. There were no unadjusted audit differences, so, um, any items that were noted, we worked with management to ensure that we have reflected in your financial statements. There were only a handful of adjustments. A lot of those just had to do with, um, you know, making sure that certain items were recorded in the appropriate buckets. Any concerns in how they're actually recorded? The day-to-day accounting was done very well, no concerns from that perspective. Um, other than that, there's no other significant comments, uh, or I should say significant comments, no other significant observations or concerns or comments to bring to your attention before I take some of the financial statements. But I'll pause for just a moment to see if there's any questions. Slowly, pretty everybody asleep, it's after seven o'clock. I'm not talking about anything exciting as porcupines or deer or Jim's sneaky down alleys, so. Apologize for that, so. Auditors try to make, take a joke wherever I can, so I apologize for making you one of your expense due. Um, so taking us into the financial statements, um, the first couple of pages take us through the independent auditor's report. Um, as I mentioned earlier, the auditor's report is an unmodified or clean audit opinion. Um, it goes through our, the basis for our opinion, which means basically it talks about the fact that we went, did, performed our audit in accordance with Canadian, uh, generally accepted auditing standards. Um, so what we're required to do is all the work that we determine necessary to, to, uh, formulate our opinion. Uh, the opinion, pardon, sorry, that also goes through management's responsibility with regards to the financial statements. As well as the rest of our, our auditor's responsibilities as well. Taking us to the first page with numbers on it, is the statement of financial position. So really what this is, is a snapshot of where the town was in December third and first. Um, so what I'll probably do as I'm going through these is I'll just talk about some of the larger current here items. And, uh, if you have any questions or concerns, just please feel free to interrupt. So looking at this page, the top part of this page represents your financial assets. These are things such as cash, investments, or items that will be converted, can be converted into cash to help the town, uh, meet its obligations. This'll differ from the non-financial assets that we'll talk about in a few moments. So looking at kind of the, the big changes here, um, one thing right at the top, I was about to talk about cash. We said that cash is relatively consistent with prior year. Um, I know it does look like we've dropped, again, we've dropped about ninety thousand. But when we look at that number, um, compared to all of the assets as a whole, compared to the, uh, operations, this is kind of a very small variance. Um, we will go through the statement of cash flows in a few moments, so we'll talk about that variance. But we look at our cash balances, overall, very consistent with prior year. Our trade and other receivables were just down just a modest amount. And our taxes and grants were also down, uh, a modest amount. Uh, the fact that your taxes and grants, uh, receivable were down is quite good, uh, shows that you guys were still able to collect. Uh, I know a lot of yous now like struggle a little bit with that, do you, uh, uh, def- deferrals and various things that happened with COVID, so. Um, so again, keeping that number, uh, down from the prior year, very, very good, uh, sign. Uh, we've got our loans receivable, these are amounts that we've lent to, uh, the waste authority as well as the ball course. So we do see that those have come down as well. Um, this is just primarily due to your regular scheduled payments. Now, the next item where we do see an increase in our investments in marketable, uh, securities. So again, we'll talk about this when we get into our statement of operations, but when we look at it, we saw a point of increase in that. So again, the results of the operations allowed the town to, um, take some of the cash that it had generated and invested to, uh, generate a, a return for the town going forward. And to also, again, help assist with, um, you know, future projects and those types of things. And one of the other items that drives the ability to increase that investment areas, we get down a little bit lower, we'll go center deferred revenues up. So again, talked a little bit about this earlier. Deferred revenue largely represent received cash, but we haven't met the stipulations, we have spending. So part of that has helped to kind of track those investment amounts as well. Um, below that, we get into our landfill reselling or other areas, so those numbers stay relatively consistent with prior year. Overall, we saw an increase in our, our financial assets, again, largely as a result of our operations that we had to do in moments. Below that, we get into our financial liabilities, so these represent obligations. Um, some of them are current, others are more long-term in nature. So going down that item, we've got our council table and our crew liabilities, we can see there's an increase there. A lot of that increase just has to do with time and some of the, uh, problems, results of some of the operations that were occurring, uh, towards the end of the year. Um, your employee bank obligations that were relatively consistent. Deferred revenue saw a small increase, we'll go through that when we get into note nine, but again, the situation of that, we do see some funding, we haven't met, again, those stipulations. Now, our long-term, yeah, we see a bit of an increase there, we got related to our, uh, regular scheduled payments. Now, right below that, the, uh, the subfield of your financial liabilities is the line called your fin- net financial assets. What this line represents is that if you were to take your financial assets, would you be able to offset all of your obligations? In the current year, we do notice that the town did see increasing your net financial assets. So again, showing that as a result of your strong operations, you further put yourself in a position going forward to be able to invest. To more than enough financial assets to offset your obligations. Below that, we get into our non-financial assets. These represent the, uh, assets that you have. These represent the uh assets that you have that are consumed in in the uh ongoing operations that provide services to your various stakeholders. Um, the first item is obviously the largest number on your statement of financial position. And that represents your tangible capital assets, so that represents all your hard assets, like trucks and ragers, as well as all your infrastructure, buildings and those types of items. We do see that it stayed relatively consistent with the prior year. This is because that amortization that I talked about earlier, so that amount where we set up the cost of being be that estimated useful life, bringing that amount into the expenses. Those expenses that we're bringing in that represent non-cash expenses were relatively consistent with the amount of new investment that you had in the current year. Then we get into our prepaid expenses and inventory held for consumption. Prepaid expenses stay relatively consistent, while your inventory for consumption saw a bit of a decrease this year. A lot of times those decreases just matter of timing, as to whether your certain assets are going to be grabbed from those types of items. Overall, when we get to the bottom, we have your accumulated surplus. And so the accumulated surplus essentially represents the town's residual ownership and its assets, less its less its obligations. So we do see that an increase from a hundred and four to a hundred and six uh million this year. And again, that's the results of software of your operations, which we'll get to when we get to the next page. So the next page being the statement of operations, this um page has to tell us what occurred in the town financially throughout the year. The first uh group of numbers is your operating revenue. When we look at our operating revenue compared to the prior year, it stayed relatively consistent. Um, looking at some of those items, we can see a small increase in our net useful taxes. Um, we also saw a little decrease in our user fees as well. That was somewhat offset by our investment, so. Look at our investment, um with that increase in investments, some of the rates of return that you were able to secure this year made up for some of the uh decreases in some of your other line items, so. Um, keeping your rep- your overall operating revenue revenue relatively consistent with the prior year. Moving down to your next group, we've got our expenses. If you look at our expenses, um they did come in lower than we had budgeted for. They're a little bit higher than the prior year. When we look across a number of your line items, they are relatively consistent with the other with the prior year, except for probably your water, wastewater. Now, during the year, the town did do a number of water projects. A lot of that amount was capitalized this year. But there were certain items uh related to some of those projects that were um not considered betterments or new projects. It were considered repair and maintenance type type expenditures, so those items were expensed this year. Overall, when we take our operating revenues less our operating expenses, currently we see that we have a small deficiency this year. So a hundred and seventy-eight thousand compared to the small surplus we had in the prior year, and much less than what we had uh anticipated in our budget. Now, that being said, below that, we get into our capital funds. So this is where we receive funding for capital purchases. So again, this is where the government, um senior levels of government have provided fund provided funding for capital projects. And so we've met those stipulations by acquiring those capital projects, and we get directly from that entity. So when we take that small operating deficiency gap in our uh capital uh revenue, we end up with a surplus in the current year of two point one million dollars. Now, a bit bit more modest compared to uh the prior year, we'll get three point six. But again, that's largely as a result of the amounts of capital funding that we received and recognized this year. Uh, we of course add that on to the prior year's accumulated surplus and that residual ownership, the best amount that we had in the current year. Moving on to the next page, this is a statement of change in net financial assets. So I've already talked a little bit about your net financial asset position, um when I was talking about the statement of financial position. So what this page does is really takes your excess of revenues or expenditures and net income adjusted for those changes in your capital assets or those non-financial assets, to really show why did we have a change in our net financial asset position. Again, when we look at it, the largest numbers here are the fact that we acquired three point four million dollars of tangible capital assets. When we amortized or had that non-cash uh expense related to the uh three point four million dollars, so again, largely those amounts were even. But when we get down and see the the amounts of changes in our uh prepaid expenses as well as our inventory, that's where we kind of saw that change in our net financial assets. The next page is a statement of cash flows. And again, this is where I have to apologize to people who haven't heard me talk earlier. Um, whenever I go through a set of financial statements, we like to talk about this pa- this page a little bit more because of course, this this page always does a nice job of telling, first off, what occurred in the bank account uh for the town for the year, but it largely kind of sets up the narrative of what occurred during the year. So when we look at it, um the first part of it um shows our cash flow from operations. So it takes our, again, our excess of revenues or expenditures or net income adjusted for non-cash expenditures, like our again, or sorry, non-cash expenses, like the amortization that we spoke about earlier, as well as some of the other changes in some of our uh receivables, payables, deferred revenue, to come down to a subtotal that's eight point four million this year compared to three million the prior year. So what this number represents is the cash flow generator from our day-to-day uh uh operations. Now, one of the key items here is that while there was a significant increase, a large portion of it, one point seven million of it, is a result of us receiving funding and bringing it into our bank account, but us not meeting the stipulations yet. So again, that deferred revenue that I spoke about earlier. So the next question would be Derek, well, our day-to-day operations generated eight point four million dollars, now we're uh cash balance went down a little bit. So of course, as we go down through that statement, we see that we turned three point four million dollars and invested it in capital assets. So again, about half of it got turned around and invested. Um, and then the rest of it was invested in actual investments. So the cash that was either generated through our operations or through those those funds that we received where we hadn't met those stipulations, we've either invested in hard assets or we've invested it in true investments for future use. And of course, we also do see a little cash flow now related to our payment of our long-term debt. So overall, when we look at our cash position, it decreased by about eighty-seven thousand dollars, keeping our cash relatively consistent with the prior year. After that, we get into the notes to the financial statements. Um, so I spoke spoke about the accounting policies earlier. So the first couple of pages going from page five to eight, kind of take us through the town's significant accounting policies. And again, those policies have stayed relatively consistent with the prior year. I shouldn't say relatively, they've stayed absolutely consistent with the prior year. Because there's been no changes in the framework and accounting adopted or changing policies. Um, note two on page nine and ten takes us through some of those uh recent accounting announcements. So again, largely what these are is, I talked about the framework earlier, the fact that there are some changes coming in the future. Um, this note just talks about some of those potential changes that could um impact the uh financial statements of the town. Uh, again, those areas are really tough to hear me read through. Um, my voice isn't that exciting when when reading, so um what I would recommend though is if you have an opportunity at some point in time to uh to have a read through those, um it's quite interesting. Nobody seems to believe me that or not. Um, so I'll take us to page eleven. That's where we start to get into some of the numbers. Um, uh notes that kind of tie out and kind of show some of the uh details to some of the numbers in our statement of financial position operations. So uh note three just takes us through cash and cash equivalents. Um, largely we're just be just holding cash, so we weren't holding any kind of control funds or anything different like that. So just cash in our cash at at year-end. Uh, note four provides us some information on taxes and grants um in place of taxes receivable. So again, just showing that a large portion of the amount that's there is made up of the local income and taxes receivable. Uh, note five takes us to our loans receivable, so again, amounts have uh lent out to uh to the Waste Authority as well as the Golf Club, and some of the terms were associated with those. Moving on to page twelve, um note six. Uh, this note talks a little bit about the investments that we're holding, so it shows that cost as well as the market value. Um, again, we did see that increase this year, the town was able to take some of that cash that had not been used during the year as a result of, again, uh projects either be delayed or receiving funding and and just investing in them. Uh, page thirteen, note seven, this is a bit of a breakdown of our inventory held for consumption. So again, what we saw here was just a small decrease um uh overall, largely in our water supplies. Again, just just some of the supplies that we're using with regards to the water services. Note E provides a kind of condensed per um uh information on the tangible capital assets. There is a schedule a little later on that provides a bit more information, um showing the complete breakdown of costs less the accumulated amortization. This note just kind of shows an overview condensed with the net book value is. Note nine takes us through our deferred revenue. And so with this note, again, what it does is it shows the breakdown of some of that, those funds that we received from uh uh from the province and uh the amounts that we've received and we haven't met those stipulations, so they've been deferred. So again, we see that large increase that I that I spoke about earlier on the statement of cash flows, that one point seven million really being driven in there. Then we've got some other deferred revenue, which is related to kind of prepaid deposits and some of those prepaid property taxes as well. Those numbers tend to stay relatively consistent with the prior year, because they're kind of kind of always the same, we'll kind of remain in property taxes, those types of items. That note further goes down and kind of shows the continuity of the deferred revenue as well. Um, note ten, uh it provides some information on our long-term debt. So again, showing the amounts that are are uh tax-worthy ventures in just our repayment terms, as well as rates below that. Note eleven on page sixteen is a requirement under the MGA. Um, it just takes us through what the uh town's debt limits are, as well as the debt servicing limits. So when we look at it, of course, um the amounts improved slightly this year as a result of our debt going down. Um, page seventeen, note twelve takes us to the accumulated surplus. I spoke a little bit earlier about accumulated surplus being residual ownership that the town has in its assets, less its liabilities. And so when you look at your accumulated surplus, it's really kind of broken into kind of three buckets. Um, there's an amount that's represents your equity in tangible capital assets. So that represents kind of your net book value of your assets plus any debt associated. And then you've got your reserves, so these are amounts that you've restricted for future purposes. And then you've got your unrestricted amount, which represents amounts that are available for the main operations. So when we look at this, this note how it's set up, it gives you a breakdown of what your reserves are, as well as your restricted surpluses, um your unrestricted and then your equity in tangible capital assets. There's also a schedule later on that shows a little bit more information on that as well. Um, page eighteen talks about our segmented disclosures. So a little bit later on, we get into a schedule that kind of shows our breakdown of our expenses by not just object, but by function as well. Um, so this talks a little bit about about the information that's available in that. Um, note uh fourteen on page twenty is salary and benefits disclosure. So again, another requirement under the MGA, um just um discloses again compensation amounts that were taken um in the current year, here's a summary here. Um, note fifteen on page twenty-one takes us to the local authorities pension plan. So the town does uh participate in the pension plan. Um, it just kind of shows the amounts that were of course the employer's contribution, as well as the employee's contribution, as well as a little bit of information regarding the surplus that the pension plan had. Um, note sixteen talks about potential continued liabilities. Um, so just a full review that there are some items that are outstanding. Um, note seventeen talks about financial interests, so talks about um potential interest rate risk, credit concentration liquidity risk, just largely indicating that um information is disclosed in the financial statements as required, and there's no additional items to be disclosed. Um, if you got if the town uh was to had any um different market risks or uh uh credit risks that weren't necessarily already reflected elsewhere in the financial statements, this would be largely where we would disclose them. So if the town was trading Bitcoin or OBO futures, there would be some type of disclosure in here. You're not just, you're not, you're just being those sort of words. Um, note eighteen talks about contractual rights, so this was a section a couple of years ago. Just talks about some of the future uh revenue streams that the town currently has contractual rights to. Um, note nineteen talks about COVID nineteen. Uh, we didn't do that on purpose, but that's kind of mean how that worked out. Uh, that's probably the only time I'll say anything about COVID. Um, largely, again, just indicates, of course, obviously it's had a very significant dislocating effect impact on 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 all organizations. Um, there is one uh note about note in here, of course, is that um the town obviously did receive some of the uh MOST uh grant. Of course, that's disclosed in here as well. Um, page twenty-four is just the last few items, of course, just indicating where the budget information is presented is. Um, twenty-one, uh ultimately, the financial statements are required to stay in draft until they're approved by council. And then uh twenty-two comparative information, there was just a couple of uh areas where um some of the items were remapped in the current year. So your bottom line did stay the same with the comparative, but just um sometimes we can change financial staff and kind of remap the balls in a different way, and so those were just just move some of those line items around a little bit. But again, no impact on the prior year's earnings, so speaking. Starting at page, oh, sorry, before we go too far, today is wrong, oh, sorry. Today's the twenty-sixth, huh? I forgot you told us on the auditor's report, twenty-sixth. You had budgeted, the budget information was approved by council. Oh, it's last year, sure, it was last year, sorry. I'm going up, is yours wrong too, the budget, you're right, carry on. Sorry, I was, I was worried to get that. It's like, whoa, whoa. So sorry about that.
Oh, that's my bad.
Okay, um, starting on page twenty-five, we get into the schedules, the financial statements. So while the notes did provide a little bit more, these schedules also provide a little bit more information as well. Um, schedule one, sorry, should just takes us through our schedule of government transfers. Right, it's a bit of a breakdown as to when we receive some of the government uh transfers coming in largely from the province, but also we receive some from the local governments. Um, no, or sorry, schedule two on page twenty-six takes us to our schedule of segment disclosures. So again, largely what's occurring here is, um as I mentioned before, your statement of operations shows it by function. Um, this shows it by both object and function, so again, just showing uh showing out your operations kind of a couple of different ways, just for additional information. Um, page twenty-seven, um provides a schedule of our changes in accumulated surplus. Um, I actually like to talk about the uh accumulated surplus a little bit more this way as compared to the note earlier. So again, this kind of shows you those three buckets that I talked about earlier, and how those uh three buckets of residual ownership or equity, if you will, kind of uh relate to each other. Um, schedule four takes us through our schedule of net useful taxes. So what this um does is, of course, it takes us through your um the gross levy, the less the requisitions. And then schedule five takes us to our expenses just by object. So again, when we look at your expenses, we show them a couple of different ways in your financial statements, again, by function. And in the segment, it's going to be right, it'll show it by function and object, and then ultimately here, just by object. Um, page thirty is our schedule of tangible capital assets. So earlier, we showed, there was a note to show the net value of your tangible capital assets. This schedule obviously showing quite a bit more information here, showing the cost analysis, as well as the accumulated amortization that has been taken in the year. That is a hundred yard dash three of financial statements. Doesn't reflect the amount of work that your team puts into getting this information acquired from here. So any questions? Now, my wife says I mumble, so I mumbled through that. I said that I can go through again.
None? Okay. Would you like to, we will, should we approve your signing? Eric was first. Again, any questions? So you love all the paper? Both, I did carry. Do you want to move on for information? For your waste management?
You want me to go through again? Sorry, sure, let's move on again, but again.
Sure.
Um, you seem to have a concept of anything. Okay, I guess I've got to tell Karen, she's probably a lot of this. Um, so earlier today, I went through the uh authority statements with with their board. Um, so again, um, we issued it unmodified or clean audit and any related to them as well. So we can scroll up a little bit. Um, again, the basis of the opinion was that we conducted the audit in accordance with the Canadian generally accepted audit standards. Um, stat this opinion reads very similar to the town's, and then it goes through management's responsibilities, as well as our responsibilities as uh auditors. Let me take us to the first major numbers on it. So again, talk about the statement of financial position from the town being a snapshot of where they are. Um, similar, this would be a snapshot of where the uh Waste Authority was. Um, when we look at uh their financial assets, um in particular, cash, it comes out right away. Uh, we said that they had a quite a decrease from the prior year. Now, one, as we go through, we'll look at the statement of cash flows, but again, largely we'll look at it. Um, we look towards the bottom at the non-financial Um we look towards the bottom at the non-financial assets, we'll see that there was a large increase there. So that kind of sets up the narrative of these authorities' financial statements and that the cash was largely used to invest, invest in new capital assets, so we've got infrastructure, those types of items. Um moving down, oh, sorry. Sorry. Um our trade and other receivables, we can see a bit of an increase at year end. Uh that's largely due to the increase of all units and customers that we had this year. And then our investments stayed relatively consistent with the prior year. Seen just a modest increase, that's just the investment. Um overall, we see our financial assets come down. Again, largely that's that use of cash that we spoke about a few months ago. Well, then we get into our financial liabilities, we see our accounts have increased this year. Again, a lot of that has to do with the infrastructure, that's been what's occurring here at year end. Um then we see our landfill was supported liability. So that's a liability that we're projecting out into the future associated with closure and monitoring of the landfill eventually in the future. Usage increased there as we're trying to um show or depict that liability will increase as the landfill continues to be used. Then we get to loans, loans to the county as well as loan to uh Red Cliff. So those obligations went down as a result of uh the regular scheduled payments we spoke about earlier from the town's perspective. And when we look at the um waste authorities' net financial asset position, do you know what it is? From a net financial asset position, one point seven million to net debt position of three point four. Now, what that essentially means is that if we were to look at this snapshot in time, we don't have enough financial assets offset all our obligations. That's not necessarily a problem for the waste authority when we consider the fact that the largest, or I guess the second largest obligation on the financial liability side is landfill closure liability. So that's a liability that we'll experience way out into the future. And so it doesn't mean that there's an liquidity issue or anything like that. What it really means is that essentially the authority has earmarked some of its future revenue streams to pay off that obligation, right? And that kind of makes sense when we look at the business model and how its operations are, are set up. Well, that we get into our non-financial assets, obviously, as I mentioned before, there was some investment in tangible capital assets, so we see that increase there. And then our inventory per consumption stayed relatively consistent with the prior year. We do see a little bit of an increase. Overall, when we look at our accumulated surplus, that was an increase. So again, that, keep in mind, that accumulated surplus represents that residual ownership or that residual equity in the assets, less its liabilities. So again, we saw a fair amount of investment that occurred this year. Um and that investment's kind of reflected in here. And of course, when we get into the statement of operations, which is the next page, we'll see that there was a positive bottom line that helps drive that, that uh increase. In the next page, please. So the, looking at the statement of operations, we've got, we've seen an increase in our total revenue, largely driven by our tonnage charge. So again, we saw there was an increase in revenue, uh largely uh as was the customer, um which is an empty increase in our operations overall. Moving down to our expenses, um we've seen an increase to two million from one point seven. Again, largely that, if we look at the expenses, there's a couple of things to consider here for a moment. But just looking at it in general, we see an increase, which makes sense given the fact that we've increased our operations. We look at the bottom two line, line items on this statement, we'll see they relate to amortization and loss on the disposable tangible capital assets. So those two items represent non-cash expenses. So earlier, I spoke a little bit about amortization, now that's based on the estimated use of your asset over time. We see that that's increased this, this year. And again, that's largely because we saw that investment or that increase in our, our uh tangible capital assets. So we kind of factor those two items out of our expenses, did, did see a bit of a variance, but stayed relatively consistent with the prior year. Moving down, we see our excess of revenues or expenditures stayed relatively consistent with the prior year. Now, when we look at our statement of cash flows, we'll, we'll add back those non-cash items. So we'll see that the impact on our day-to-day operations, we talked about the cash for day-to-day operations, was quite strong. Again, we turned it on, we invested some of that cash, well, with the cash that we had on hand at the end of last year into those tangible capital assets. So overall, we did see that increase in the surplus, so that residual ownership increased as a result of that excess of our revenues or expenditures. Can you go to the next page, please? So the next page is our statement of changes in net financial assets. So again, this year, I talked about the fact we went from net financial asset position to a net debt position. And obviously, when we look at the statement, the big difference that is the amount of acquisition of, of tangible capital assets. So during the year, when we look at the waste authority, it invested four point two million dollars into new assets, so the new structure of assets. So again, that's really what's driving this from that net financial asset position to the net debt position. Can you go to the next page, please? So again, this is our statement of cash flows, and I talked a little bit, again, when I was going through the town's statements. But when we look at our, taking our excess of revenues or expenditures and adjusting it for non-cash items, changes in our receivables, changes in our payables. We look at our cash from operations, so that first subtotal, we see what went up this year is two point five million this year compared to two point three million. So again, when we look at our day-to-day operations, they generate two point five million. So a bit of an increase over the prior year, which makes sense given the fact that we saw our revenues increase. Down below, we see our regular scheduled payments, so again, that's where we see some of our cash going out the door. But down below is where we see the big use of our cash in our year, so that four point two million dollars of new capital assets. So again, that's largely what's driving the fact that we see that decrease in our cash流出. Um after that, we get into the notes of the financial statements. So again, the first couple of pages take us to the significant accounting policies. Um after that, we get into uh the second note, which is similar, we go through all the policies, it's important that they're all disclosed. Um note two takes us through the uh council pronouncements, which are consistent with what we've seen, we've seen the town's statements. So eventually, we get into uh note three, which again, starts to take us through some of the uh numbers that are in our statement of operations. So note three takes us to our cash and cash equivalents. So again, what we saw here is we had some short-term investments, it was just, just cash. Um note four takes us to our investment, showing our costs, as well as our market value. Um note five providing some information on the uh tangible capital assets, so again, just showing the net book values. Again, there's a breakdown a little bit later in the financial statements. Uh note six talks about the provision for landfill closure. So again, just talks about the fact that there is an estimate here that we're trying to uh reflect that usage and that increase of the liability as it's being used. I think it's the next statement, the uh note going through the accumulated surplus. So again, the accumulated surplus representing those three buckets of residual ownership. Of largest amount obviously being the equity in tangible capital assets, so that's that net value of the capital assets, less the debt associated with it. And then um amounts that are internally restricted and amounts that are unrestricted that would be available for operations. Would the next page, please? Um note eight takes us through the related party balances and transactions, obviously, the waste authority has uh transactions with both the county and the town. So we're just prepared to disclose those. Note nine takes us through any financial risks and concentration risks. So again, similar to financial instruments on your guys' financial statements. If the base authority was trading in global futures or anything weird, would have to be disclosed in that area. They're not trading in global futures here, way there as well. Um note ten takes us through the loan which is payable to uh the county and the town, giving us some information on the uh repayment terms. Uh note eleven takes us through the, through the debt limits. Uh twelve, it's going to improve in nineteen and back thirteen, uh showing information on the budget. Um fourteen takes through contractual rights. And then fifty, we improve all of the financial statements again. The financial statements were stated in draft until the, they were approved by uh, by the board earlier today. That's even faster spread. So I didn't have notes, so. Anybody have any questions or concerns? None? All in favor, proceed. Information, both, carry. Somebody like to move us into both?
I'll make that motion.
And actually. Chris?
I don't know.
Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Both? Okay, minutes. Council meetings of April twelve, twenty twenty-one. We're in. Citing. Any questions or concerns? Saying none, all in favor? Both? Carry. And then a town and Red Cliff Library Board meeting of February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Both, that is carried. New review of both club board and directors meeting till March ninth. Chris? Any questions or concerns? Saying none, all in favor? Both, that is carried. And Municipal Planning Commission meeting held April twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, carry. Any questions or concerns? Saying none, all in favor? Both, that is carried. Bielots, we have bielot nineteen twenty-four, slash twenty twenty-one, to be a land use bielot amendment or consideration.
Option number one.
Any questions or concerns? Saying none, all in favor? Both, that is carried. Request for decision, approachment permit application for lots twenty-three, twenty-four, block forty-three, five, one, 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 seven, eight, two, oh, eight, second, three, seventy, specific others. Shining.
I'd like to move that we can turn approachment. Deal with them, optional.
Any questions or concerns? Saying none, all in favor? Both, that is carried. And Red Cliff days. Request for decision. Change of days, Chris?
I'd like to go to option number one.
Any questions or concerns? Throw up.
I find that that date is a little bit too close to our fall festival. We have our fall festival, but within a month. Could we not just do a combined effort like we did last fall?
That was the discussion we was not having this morning.
Yeah, indeed.
We are waiting to see what the restrictions will give us, that's the.
And, and I know that the decision for Red Cliff days has to be now because of all the planning that was forward, otherwise we just wouldn't have time to plan it. So I would, I'd like to see it, it's free, yeah, canceled and unfortunately, it's just one of those circumstances.
Chris? Um, what we had are red, it's so being uh, came up this idea. I don't really want her to ever put her in there, but yeah, basically. I recognize that they're too close, that we're just gonna put them together, but uh maybe that's not, she got. As far as I'm concerned, we're going to do the two. Because they are too close.
That, that weekend is not the one.
Kind of think that just for weather-wise, COVID, flash, uh for whoever's announced it, they're applying June fourteen, but.
I'd be more in favor if it was applied, when.
Okay, well, it's certainly a matter of. Because I thought that's what Carla and I said along the way. But there is no mention of it.
Do, do we want to call it Red Cliff Days or just?
Uh yeah, we had the conversation as well, just because Red Cliff Days has that uh, that feel to it. And people are going to support it, it's called Red Cliff Days, it goes in November. Yeah, color anything else, loses that feel, that luster, that uh perfect, actually, filled up with it.
True, true.
Okay.
It's on the table. You do. You got it. What did I say?
You moved up to one.
Oh, yeah, okay, that sounds fine. I would like to uh amend that and add it to. The option one, but that is a joint. The then with.
The fall. Yeah. So everybody's clear?
So then you'd have the fall festival and?
It just basically would take the budget for both of them and use it for this, and we would not call anything the fall festival this year.
Okay, but what your motion read, uh says that, you said it will be on uh, in August.
Yes, I guess I could clarify a little bit though. And that Red Cliff Days event, August twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, will be in lieu of the Red Cliff, the regular Red Cliff Days and the fall festival. Is that correct?
We want to get.
Yeah.
So do you want to add in lieu of the two events for this year?
Okay.
And if COVID is done by then, we'll have one hell of a party.
Yeah, that sure would be nice. This might all be forgotten. You know? Jason, Jason, do you work in the uh basketball?
So everybody's clear? Any more questions or concerns? All in favor? Both? Carried. Alright, so request for decision, tax recovery, bid and auction. Options are on page one thousand.
For option number one?
Got the. Okay, any questions or concerns? All in favor? Both, that is carried. And then the government feasibility study for Southwest twenty-one, thirteen, oh, six, west of the Fort Marina. Is that right? Carry. Any questions or concerns? Saying none, all in favor? Both, that is carried. And then. Biophysical assessment of wetland, bringing for a permitting for Southwest twenty-one, thirteen, oh, six, west.
Option number one?
That'll be.
Just don't ask me to try to say that.
And this is phase two. Phase one was done?
Yes.
Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Both, that is carried. On the east side area, structure plan update for consideration. Jim?
One.
Option one? Any questions or concerns? There's a question I have, there's two different drawings there. One of them shows a lagoon and one of them shows houses over the lagoon. Which one are we kind of playing with? One, one shows a green, big green area, is that the old one? One one shows a green, big green area, is that the old one?
The second, but this one was the new uh plan that James had been working on.
This is the new one, so the next one is the old one.
Yes.
That was the old plan there. And is there a reason why you can't develop that?
Would you doubt that there is any escape base to which. Basically, you do a bunch of sound like. Depending on the results of the sound, but you have to determine the requirement prior to. So basically, you have the duty area around you and do it standard.
Right, and do metal testing and all that kinda stuff, because. That that was closed in seventy five, so. As far as the years of passage, it's they're long paths.
Yeah, that's right.
So it would just be a matter of testing. So preliminary testing, I don't know how much that would cost, but it would then let us know if it was feasible to go further or not. So I don't know. I guess. To to just blanket out. I don't know if that's our best bet for acres. Is this, everything else, like all that attenuation, that's still further down the road, right? The tank they just put in?
And it'd be right beside that. Just be able to talk.
What couldn't we just build the, make the park out of it?
Well, that's basically just shows the green area now, but but it's it's worth more as residential land if you don't need it as park.
Well, yeah, but uh. If you build big enough park out of it, there's no. There's no uh problem that come back later, but if you fill the house on it. All of a sudden, you've got it caving in and you've got uh gases coming up and into people's houses and. There's lots of chances of liability.
Well, like you say, that's one of the things that has gone past all those years. And and a lagoon isn't deep, right? This isn't like it was forty feet deep and it's full of. Stuff, it is, like that's not how a lagoon works. You know, I I can see fear, but that doesn't mean it's not developable. Anyway, no, that's okay. That was just my concern, I just saw that. A big, a big green spot. Jim?
How's crystal ball?
None. Okay, you made the motion, any more comments? Questions or concerns, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. Recycling depot project for consideration. Shawna?
I would like to make a motion that the recycling depot get put on hold. To either come back with a new area that is more financially feasible. Because this. Item that we budgeted two thousand dollars for has now over doubled. And there may be. A more suitable. Area. Does it medicine have to put it in the parking lot?
Just the motion and then we can discuss. That's a long motion.
Right, that is true, that is true. To either. To either be tabled for next year?
A motion.
Okay, the motion is to either come back with a more suitable site.
Table it till next year.
Or we table it for next year.
You can't do that.
I I can't tell you how to make motions, but I would suggest you make one of these motions and we can always defeat it if we don't like it. Just saying, but but if you wanted to just table it, I guess we table it, but to table it, then we also have to pick a date when it's gonna be brought back to the table. And I'm gonna tell you what motion you do, what are you doing?
Could we just make a third motion?
She's making the motion.
Just send it back, send it back to administration. Don't look better options. Yes, I like that option is just to send it back to administration to come back with a better option.
Who made that, Shawna or Gabby?
I put the words in her mouth.
Alright, Shawna did it. Okay. Any discussion, concerns? Go ahead, Larry.
I I think for, like whenever there's a difficult situation, we say, well, give it to administration. I I think that we should choose one of these two motions to. And the law will say this, right?
Well, if if the city, sorry.
No, you can talk, he's done.
So what the city can put bins in a parking lot and and it is totally feasible for them to to have recycling. Without having a cost of a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. That I think that us developing this big recycling depot at that cost is crazy on our taxpayers. Either we have to come up with a better solution or something. A better place or.
Parking lot, it's like bricks and dusting.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, is this another elephant parking lot, okay, I just wanna know how much a parking lot costs, right?
Alright. We don't, hey Larry, go ahead.
Basically, the uh collecting of the garbage is all in a whole dumpster anyway. But the. The the facility here generally. The like the concept of it was we were going to collect a lot of compost. Stuff that would be kept out of the landfill. And enhance the whole of our landfill, we wouldn't have the uh. The gases building up and it would. It would make our landfill a better landfill. The compost stuff, but we don't have the compost machine and the compost area up or running yet. But that was the the gist of what I felt. This whole deal was with. Was to collect compost. And um. I I don't see a bad, that it's a bad area. And I, you know, if you try and get this to do something nowadays, it just costs a lot of money and if we don't do it right, there's no use in it.
You know, I I understand. But is this our best option?
Well, we've done a lot of work to it already. I don't, I don't think anybody's gonna want this in their backyard where this here seems to be a goal. I can't think of a better place for it.
Yes, I I don't know, as long as I've sat on council, this item keeps coming up in front of us. I think we should just. Bite bite the bullet and go ahead and do it. Because there's a lot of residents in town that are asking for some sort of recycling depot.
I agree.
And if we can use it to feed uh compost material to the landfill. That will eventually come back to us as revenue.
Chris?
Um at the M D C meeting, we talked about this. Not sure that we really truly understood the cost implications we were putting on the project. Now, the camera's up, it's time to, it lights up. So I wonder if M D C could reconsider its position on this?
You don't have to. Cause the town could, you look to the S B A V. These are just conditions. I I don't think the days last great, thirty days of the last time. You gotta bring it to us sooner than that. Anyway. Okay, any other comments, concerns? I, no, I have something, you spoke twice already.
Oh.
Well, when I first read this, I have to say that I I had um. Some very bad thoughts about M D C. Because they have made, in my opinion, they have made some decisions. That I thought were almost detrimental to the community and then when we're actually trying to just do something like put some bins on a piece of gravel. They come up with fifteen conditions that cost the town a hundred and twenty five grand and they'll give the golf course C cans because what the heck, it's a good deal. And it's not a good deal. Somebody's gonna look and don't speak out here, we gotta make a beautiful. Piece of recycling ground. Have trees and uh store runoff catchment and. I don't even mind, but there is power on the pole there, if anybody go by that block, the city does have a street light on that wooden pole. If you drive by all the five city. Recycles of which they're gonna close them, I don't know which, only one of them even has a chain link fence around it and that's the one down on Fifteen Street. The rest of them are sitting in nowhere, ones by Ready, ones in Mall Baggar, ones by Shamrock, like I've been to all of them. We would have the fanciest depot in town. Well, the only depot we have, but you know, we'd have the fancy as well here. And I'm going, this is not what I envisioned when I was thinking recycling area. I don't mind putting up this fence.
We've actually for you.
At at there is streetlights there. Um truly, if we wanted a camera, I'd say I'd I'd be talking to somebody across the street. Where there's already power and a place and make a deal with them, cause you can buy some very good cameras. And you set them up and if what you want, if that's gonna be in the entrance and exit, that's where you'll see everybody and their license plates. Setting them up, looking at somebody dropping off the TV with their hoodie on, doesn't show anything, you need something better than that. And I'm just like our. Skating arena in Mark Woodin School, that costs us what, fifty bucks a month just to have a power pole and a meter there? That again, the five in the city don't have that, I wasn't expecting this to come back, but this. So yeah, I was, I was fairly mid when they grabbed it. I don't know, I'm older.
Doesn't sound like it.
Well, it's just, this. I think we need a recycling depot. I think we need it fenced in the hopes that it catches any litter instead of having it blowing over onto Mitchell. But other than that. The streetlights are fine, I I don't know, people recycle at three in the morning, if they are, they're not really recycling. They're depositing. Go ahead, Gabby.
Yeah, I I hate to say it, but I agree, do I, I had.
Well, now I know I'm.
Yeah, yeah, what I had envisioned, like in in Haverly, they have the bins up against. The might be the police station. And it's got a wooden fence around it, no flowers, no trees. You go through grassy lake and it's it's a.
Those are portable, they're on.
Yeah, it's it's a trailer, it's an old horse trailer. So, yeah, I wanna recycling depot, I don't wanna park.
Larry, now you.
The drainage system and the and the and the swell that's in there. Is not somebody's idea, it's actually the law. Because our drainage system will not take the runoff from that area. And it's a, it's something that if you built a building there, you have to do that. It's something that the town requires. The thing about the lights. People don't wanna go out of town uh to the other end of town, I think it's a safety issue and something that makes you feel good if. If if you know that there's lighting there and everything like that. You're gonna feel more confident of going there. And a lot of people aren't gonna be able to do that recycling. You know, in the complete daylight hours, it might be twilight. And I think that's why lighting is a menace, because I think people like it. And it's not that big of a cost. It the the groundwork and the swell containment of water is is one of the bigger costs. And anybody that would build will have to do that.
Well, this could turn out to be another parking lot elephant.
Um and in five years, we no longer recycle that way.
Yes, right.
We have a hundred and twenty five thousand dollar piece of. Fence gravel.
Yeah.
I do struggle with this concept.
I do too.
Right or wrong, I don't know. Anyways, we've talked so long, I forgot what the motion was.
I made a motion for it to go back to administration to find another spot. New concept, yes.
Good. Oh, I didn't realize, I thought. Cause you guys just added it to me. I didn't definitely want to do it before. Shit. Well, the motion is to send it back. For a different spot.
For concept or?
Well.
Something.
I thought the spot, anyway.
Obviously, it's not with all the recommendations.
Well, I know a lot of the talk was with the eyewitness. You drive past our town, that's what you're gonna see, but and and that that point in time, that day, I was like, yeah, we should do that, and when I see these numbers.
And and you look at too many. It's not bad during more, but who's there? That used to be track sand for all my lifetime. Not pretty, there's a railroad track with swamp land all the way down that road, starts up at Eric's place, keeps on going all the way to Broadway. Don't love it. Again, I struggle. All in favor of the motion? Okay, opposed? Carried. And does not transit service. For consideration. Oh, you have gas badge, I might have it up on my computer last time. Nobody know the big picture. Oh, it's frozen. It's definitely, go ahead, Shawna.
I would like to make a big motion that administration continue with the existing um special transit services and go on a month to month basis. And then would I comment?
Go ahead.
So Darren, I worked for special transit, I worked for transit. And special transit is to provide a service with special needs. Now, running a service to the Northlands. Number one, would only meet up with one bus, so you would then need to transfer. Uh two, it would not provide the needs of the clients that are already being picked up. So the um proposed um trips would work for the general public. But not the special needs that special transit is is serving. It is an expensive service and it is a service that we had decided a long time ago to offer these needs. Sometimes the people who ride special services is people who not just have wheelchairs, but they motorized wheelchairs. And they do not fit in a normal per se van type. Service or taxi service. Now, had there been a taxi service that could hold wheelchairs. And and some of these bigger motorized chairs, that would probably be a better option because it is an expensive service. But we do have special needs people in this town that do require special transit services and why we decided to use them.
Anybody else? Seeing none, all in favor of continuing on months left? Opposed? That is carried. We're all getting there, we're. Two, three. Strategic planning. Motion for one thirty one. May three in a row.
Okay, leave up and.
Come inside.
Alright, yay for me. I'd like to move that we keep the current vision, but we need to change the mission. Um as the town seems to have increasingly increased the fees for their services. And I feel that we are no longer a cost effective. Um. Cost effectively delivering our services and I feel that that statement is a true oxymoron. Cost effectively delivering our services and I feel that that statement is a true oxymoron.
Make a motion, you'll keep mission?
Yeah.
Change vision.
No, no, either way.
Either way around, sorry. Keep vision, change mission.
Yeah.
So you would like to say that we offer services. At high prices?
No, but we can change our mission, right?
Well, no, if, if cost effective isn't correct, you wanna correct it.
It's not even correct anymore, right? We're, our prices are gone up like everything else and had to say that we're.
Well, we're still.
Cost effective, I don't know where we find.
Well, I can't find anything better than we are cost effective.
And I bet you some of our residents would agree with that statement as our water bills continue to skyrocket.
Find somebody that would agree with any statement.
Sure enough, sure enough.
Re dealing with what supposedly is going to meet the needs of the majority. Because there are fringe elements for us and the fringes are growing. Go ahead, Kevin.
That's why I like to watch number three to actually get some feedback from the public.
Well, and I think it says in there that if you try getting, especially with COVID kicking around, you try to get public feedback. It's an order is a painfully slow process. Unless you're just gonna do it online and then.
That would be my thought in us, I'm not lying.
I believe whenever we've tried that, I don't think you get a true sampling. Like we did that when we did. Jordan did that a lot. When she was setting up our. Penure plan and stuff like that.
Just growing, so. Everything great.
Yeah, yeah, that, that works. Okay, go ahead. Go to motion A.
When, when, when I read this, the town, the Riffler strives to create a safe and inclusive community. For its residents and business by demonstrating leadership and cost-effective delivery of public services. What's wrong with that? Isn't that, that kinda makes sense then? It's kinda what we try to strive.
Strive. Maybe it is sometimes what we do strive.
It's our, our taxes have gone up now. You certainly can strive for all. Do costs go up on services? Does gas go up? Do wages go up?
So, so the mission says cost of, cost effective delivery of public services. And again, I feel that that's an oxymoron.
Well, if you feel that, the way I mentioned the water rate, how much money do we make a year do we make on water? We don't make anything.
It, it's not about profit.
Your statement would be about profit, because you're saying that prices should be offered. Money then? We're not making money off it right now. If you lower it, will we have the cost side, the side of the world? Cost to cost. Not making any profit.
But are we being cost effective?
Yes, if it's, if we're working on cost, we are cost effective. If we're losing money, we have to aid it through taxes, so we're not being effective anyway.
Well, as we say that, we're gonna be talking about our budget here right away and having a final operating budget. We asked administration to keep it within budget. And that's not happening. And then we, we made a, a motion on, on budget to, to do a recycling depot. And all of a sudden, it more than doubled. Went up seventy-five percent. Is, is that being cost effective?
I'd say that was a talent call. That was, I believe, a decision.
Again, we make the final decisions here.
To, to a point, we don't have superpowers. We control budget. And we're supposed to try to keep administration within that budget? We do that. That's our job. Other little things like NPC, they have their job and they're an autonomous body and we have, we can't go in there and say, no, it's not happening that way. There's process. Process would be a, to the SBA. Anyway, um, we're, we're on this one. Strategic planning. The motion is to keep the vision and rewrite the mission. More discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Eric, I'd like to make motion one, accept and revision ten. New discussion. Concerns. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Who is the pundits? From Alberta Municipal Affairs.
I'm sorry, sir.
Oh, I don't want to interfere with that. We'll deal with that later.
At a later.
I need, I need a recess. Okay, let's go back. Final operating, twenty twenty-one, final operating budget for consideration.
I'll make motion that be accepted as presented, is presented? Yes, approve as presented?
Any questions or concerns, Shauna?
You knew it was coming.
Well, you can have reasons to concern, that's, there's nothing wrong with that.
I feel that the budget should be sent back to the necessary departments to make the necessary cuts, to make a balanced budget. When we went through our bridge process, we made it very clear to administration, and I'm gonna say very clear to administration, we wanted a balanced budget. And I don't care if it is half a percentage increase or if it's a one percent or three percent. We stated, and again. It seems like administration changes what we ask. And this council seems to agree on whatever the administration wants and we made it very clear we wanted a balanced budget. And again. That's my point. Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions and concerns? About the budget as it is here? Uh, question Mike? Yep. Um, and maybe it's an easy answer. There is a line in here that talks about frontages and every year we budget a large amount and we collect nothing. Are those town frontages or, or what happens with that?
Those are little concrete, but kinda just, they just get rolled up into taxes.
But it, it shows that we budget this revenue, but we never collect any. It's always zero. And I know it's an in and out, because we're just paying AMFC.
So then you never actually see that hidden, you know, it's never, you'll never see a, a number there because it.
Well, it just looks bad in your revenue when it's not coming in. And I know it is, it's going up.
Yep. So.
It's just, it's just.
It's all came in up.
When there was the old one, two, three, four, instead of just the one, two, is that when it showed off better? Cause then you had your contributions to capital reserves and switching around? Okay? Why didn't it? It, it doesn't. No, I thought that's what it was. And I'm going, well, maybe that's ours and we end up paying that for taxes. Cause it never shows as.
And I, and I, Sean, if I wanna, I can, if you'd like me to, and you can write this into your motion. We do have room in investment revenue. You saw that we made in dollars last year. So the idea was to keep our increase low because the cost of all services is, is going up, right? The cost of everything that we do is going up. Wages have gone up, so we can't necessarily keep no increase ever. So I can offset that with investment revenue if you'd like me to, which would give us a balanced budget and no, uh, property tax revenue increases.
No, no rating.
No, no ratings.
No rating.
So our, our taxes collected this year would equal taxes collected last year. So there would be, obviously with assessment changes, you, you could still see some up and down.
There's a very niche.
On how properties roll and the separation between residential and residential assessments. But our total tax revenue will be the same as last year if you'd like me to. Um, and that would solve.
Can't be feel to.
But, sorry, why did it? Oh, Shauna brought the comment.
And, and anyways, um, in reply to that. Shauna is, I'm gonna say Shauna is not one hundred percent correct in, in her statement. In that it was clear that we were going into this tight because, because of a number of reasons. We always try to go into it tight. COVID made things worse for some, better for some, but it, it was a strange year. So we went in minimal. But I, as far as I can remember, when we went through these numbers, we knew, when we were done, we knew that it was looking at a half percent increase. Which was tolerable. And I also agree, because I, I guess I've been here a long time and, and we did a lot of zeros in a row. And while that's good, uh, the fat packs were zero. And in the end, the minute you have an increase, then everybody is bent.
Yep.
And, and you, inflation last year was two point two percent, whether we'd like it or not. So we keep cutting back our capital projects. We keep cutting back. And one of these days, we're gonna be looking at what services are we gonna offer anymore or not, because. Because things are gonna change. We're gonna lose some MSI. We're going to lose some provincial funding, possibly some federal funding in the near future, because they're gonna have to pay back their debts. You can't just hack and whack everything, because if we don't pave our roads, they're gonna blow up on us. And we have quite a few, cause I drive around, I guess, that are on the verge. And we're not, you know, I have to say, maybe we're guilty in that we're not paving enough, but I also know what the heck that costs. And, and you have to weigh everything all the time. It's, it's a heck of a balancing act. So this isn't a man's fault, because I thought when we were all done this, we knew, unless school requisition changed drastically. But we were looking at half a percent back in November. This was, this is how it was. It wasn't balanced and, but all of our budgets are balanced, because we balance them with taxation. We're not allowed to run surpluses of our deficits. So, uh, this isn't a, a big thing on admin. This is ours. We should own it when it's ours. Larry?
I agree, if we don't keep up. And, uh, nobody wants, nobody wants to increase taxes, but. Of course, ever since I came, one becomes a tax.
There's a common denominator there.
You know, you just can't keep, can't keep putting it off and you can't just keep putting it off on administration. You have to bite the bone on some reason.
As, as we spend a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for a recycling depot.
No, we haven't spent that yet.
As we budgeted fifty. I'm just saying, those are the examples that I'm using, what we're spending, it's kind of hand.
People want this recycling depot.
You know what? I'm all about recycling, but these are a better way. Again, we're, we're.
Budget.
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 Go over budget, go over spend.
All right, Jim's Pfizer isn't working that good anymore. He's gonna need a shock. Can go too long. Okay. We hear you, Shauna. There's nothing wrong with what you're saying. It's just, I also know that this is very close to what we put together in the fall.
There is a thing called realism.
Yeah, and I, I've actually read several articles, one of them was even by George Kopp. That, that if you keep putting off and keep putting off, having to make the necessary increases. You'll hit the point where you have no choice. And instead of a point five percent. This year, you can be looking at ten percent. And a large increment is a lot more difficult to swallow than a little increment. But saying that, I do like Mike's idea of taking some of our investment money. That we've put aside. And putting it towards the town. Just because of the, the environment we're in right now, but nobody's gonna need money.
No, don't say no, because there are people that have.
Yeah, you're one of them.
No, no, it's not me, but I know some. Some people did very well last year in the COVID era. Some people suffered. I have empathy for that. I mean, I know what my taxes are. But I, I caution starting to take that money for mill rate stabilization. And we do have a mill rate stabilization reserve. Because just as we talked about earlier with the fireball, someday we may have a project like that to do. And you have to prioritize a half a percent. Uh, isn't a whole bunch, depending on what the assessor does with, uh, numbers too. Like last year, we had zero. Most people saw a decrease for some reason. And, and even though we were budgeting a zero, most people saw a decrease because of just the way things pan out. And if you look at what we collected in taxes last year, first, in twenty nineteen versus twenty twenty, our tax take was way down. We took in less money, just the way it worked out. Um, so that, this point five doesn't mean because my taxes are three thousand dollars last year. That I'm looking at another fifteen dollar increase. It doesn't mean that yet. My, my assessment might have gone up and it could be way more or it could be the same. Yeah, yeah, like, so it's really hard to say. And, and so I think the money we're putting away. We're putting away for a reason and, and we should keep that for the day you really need it. For the day you need new water, new plant, for the day you need other things. Our land development reserve, we spent a hundred and thirty thousand dollars of it tonight and that's, those are just studies that. You know, honestly, if you don't use those studies within five years, they're useless. You gotta do another study. And to me, that, I struggle with those too, because unless we're developing those lots in the next few years, those studies are. Well, well, they're recyclable. Anyway, that's, it's tough. Yeah, I don't, I'm not giving, like, we all get the vote. Your motion was as presented. Chris?
Oh, I really didn't mind your option at all. Um, I think, but this budget, I think we should go for it, no, but, but, uh, maybe in the future, some options. For, but go for it.
If anyone, like next November?
Of course, yes. Say we could offset, uh, point five, one percent if we did this.
That's a good option.
And we don't do it. It'd be nice to know it, every, uh, everybody.
Any other comments, concerns?
No good question.
Okay, all in favor of motion?
Wait, what's going on here?
As presented.
Proven as presented. Opposed, left is carried. Okay, now we get to go to the honorable Mr. McIvers. Chris?
City of the nation and also, uh, thank council for their recognition for my.
I heard Friday's warm evening, thank this. Yeah, I don't, I don't, it's a nice that they send us that letter, but. It's also gonna be a struggle in some communities, I can see. Trying to efficiently and expediently bring these things to fruition.
And, uh, maybe just something all over in my preparation for Dr. Kowalski, I came up with, uh, uh. A support that City of the Stuff, where they will rent you key, that you'll have to notice you, that's a good stream of load me. But, and I know I recommended it, or something like that, I know.
You, you'd be on finger without it.
Yeah, I would be, yeah.
And you get tables.
I did, I'm paying for them.
And that's only fair.
And that's only fair. But anyways, I realized there's a lot, a lot of cities doing things like that. That are all, uh, playing on the street is a good idea, but. Or we're thinking, what's, uh, what's up? I know, and I know it's. I know, and I know as a.
Okay, well, Chris moved, we received the letter for information. Any comments, all in favor? Opposed, carried. And town of Morendale, support for our CMT. Larry for information. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. And the county painter, number eighteen, letter information. Jim, move it for information. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And the town of High River, Eastern South Coast Exploration and Public Conservation, Kathy for information. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried. And Carson County, class one mandatory entry level training known as MEL program courses for information. Larry? Move for information. Any questions or concerns?
I had to look that up, the national shooting for Big Truck.
It's a hundred and thirteen hours to get a class one driver's license. And it was brought in after somebody ran a red light in Saskatchewan. And possible. Well, it was blinking, I called it a red light, but it wasn't. So then they brought in tougher laws and now people don't like those tougher laws. I thought, I read it, I thought it was a good thing.
Well, are you right?
I, I agree, it could cost us if we need people with class one licenses that don't have them, then we gotta send them off for this training, but. Then hopefully they're safer on the road. Kind of a good point. Any other? Don't get air brakes on the trailer, you can just class three. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Canadian Union of Multiple Workers, reading professors, support for delivery. Shawna? For information. When you get old, they want this to check up on you. Any other comments? All in favor, receiving for information, all that's carried. Eastside search tanks and sanitary sewer extension project update for information or information. Jim?
Uh, just basically a high level update, I just, yesterday, very simply, I just searched out his head. Just built my eyes in the background of the bypass pump, where we disconnect from our existing line and connect to this system we have.
Any other questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. A U M E Spring Leaders Caucus, what happened? Chris? Chris or Eric? Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. And then the A U M A Economic Resiliency and Recovery, yada, 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 Chris? Uh, any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then the A U M A Economic Resiliency and Recovery Task Force Final Report. Yep, same one. Yeah, I flipped my page, I'm going, why is it, what did I miss?
The attachment is.
Okay, perfect, okay, that was done. Monthly project updates. Shawna?
Um, for information, is there anything that I need to point out?
Yes, Darren wanted me to let council know that we are going to be removing the berry trees on Broadway. And we're going to put in non-berry trees and the trees that they're taking out will be repurposed.
Oh, good.
To the landfill?
No, sir.
No, I mean, like around the lake, not.
It's like, it's a chipper.
Uh, no, we work out, you have a contractor, he's gonna take them and repurpose them. Um, I don't, I don't think so, the landfill, right, correct? No, and, and are getting a bit of a break on the new trees coming in and we won't have to worry about cleaning up the berries every year from a park's perspective.
There is a recycling depot that needs some trees.
No, I have to sign a new plot.
I like John Jerry's.
Are they being repurposed within the town or is the company repurposing them?
The company is repurposing.
Okay, so it's not as if they're, they're going to the campground or anything?
We don't wanna clean them up anywhere.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure the deer will clean them up. The clean enough, yeah.
Not enough. The robins eat all of mine, if I don't pick them, they're gone. Yeah, they don't fall on the sidewalk, but I think these are just too close to buildings, so they're shy. Cause like in my yard, they eat nothing left, it's amazing. Well, we haven't voted on the monthly project update.
Was that it, for updates?
Yeah, any other questions, concerns, all in favor? Opposed, carried, and then important meeting events. Larry? It's Thursday and Friday, you guys, with your gloves on and you're cleaning up. Any spirit and all that from Rossa? Where do we meet?
Up here. Ten thirty in the morning till five thirty at night.
Ten thirty?
Yeah. And there's gonna be a camera on you making sure that you stay still.
Everybody, well, you can start anytime.
When is that?
Thursday and Friday.
We're. At ten AM?
Like that slogan.
Excuses, excuses.
For me.
Why'd you come up with realistic reasons?
The way it was on Facebook, ten thirty to five thirty, come here and they, then you can pick your route and on you go. Okay, Larry made the motion for important meetings, does anybody know any things coming up that are on here? All in favor? Opposed, that's carried, and calling five. Is this ridiculous?